Call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Sorry for being just a few minutes late. I do call the meeting, a hearing of the Cushing School Committee to order. We are here to discuss the pending debt exclusion article concerning the air, environmental quality, and decarbonization project. The meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And so can I have a motion to open?
So move. Second.
Can we do a roll call?
Mr. Hahn?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Mrs. Goleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedera?
Yes.
Mr. Halper?
Yes.
Okay. And we will, I'll ask everybody to stand so we can do the point of view. Okay. So thank you all for being here today. As members of the school committee elected by you, our town residents, our primary responsibility is to ensure that our students receive a quality education in a safe and supportive environment. To fulfill that responsibility, we must ensure that our school buildings are equipped with the necessary infrastructure to create spaces where students can thrive, spaces that are not only safe, but also conducive to learning and growth. The proposed project that you are about to hear about directly addresses critical concerns related to indoor air quality, building envelope improvements, and energy efficiency. By making these necessary upgrades, we can extend the life of our current school buildings, ensuring that they continue to meet the needs of our students and staff for years to come. This will help us avoid the need for costly new construction while also providing a healthier, more efficient learning environment. Tonight, we are here to discuss the proposition two-and-a-half-debt-exclusion ballot question, which will support the Cushing Public Schools' air, environment, quality, and clean energy project. To provide you with more details on this important initiative, I will now turn the presentation over to Superintendent Dr. Paula Bailey and Mr. Patrick McIntyre, our school business manager.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And as you just pointed out, we're here to talk about the proposition two-and-a-half-debt exclusion for the Cushing Public Schools' air, environment, quality, and clean energy project. I would just ask if people had questions, that we hold them until the end. So I want to talk about how we got here. As you know, two years ago, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to go next? I'm sorry. Patrick's going to explain what a proposition two-and-a-half-debt exclusion is. I think that's important for the public to understand.
Yep.
So as you can see on the presentation screen, debt exclusion is a voter-approved measure that allows the local government to temporarily exceed the tax levy limit set by Proposition 2 and 1/2 for specific debt-related costs, so debt-related costs only. It's specific to capital projects, typically school construction or large infrastructure projects, and it allows a municipality to raise these funds temporarily, which is important. It is not a permanent increase on the tax limit, but temporarily that coincides with the life of the debt. So in this instance, it would be approximately 20 years. And it is also critical to know that this is based on voter approval. The debt exclusion must be approved by voters through the ballot question that will be presented on April 22. Why this school project? So throughout this presentation, we're going to talk about how this school project addresses safety, indoor environmental quality improvements, infrastructural needs, extending the building longevity, improving outdated systems, and benefiting the students, staff, and the community.
Okay. So now we'll read how we got here and how it started. And as you recall, a couple of summers ago, we actually had students in our building for summer programming, and we started, staff started to notice mold in the building at the elementary school. And we cleaned it, but it kept appearing. So we had mold testing to make sure that it wasn't toxic. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't that black mold. And additionally, we had environmental companies come in to inspect the building and the situation because we wanted to be sure at that time that we didn't have a sick building. But we also had mechanical building envelope and humidity concerns, which inevitably caused the mold. So we decided a few months after that to set up a steering committee to discuss next steps. And I think it's important to realize that that steering committee consisted of many stakeholders. We had the town administrator, a select board member, a FinCon member, the board of health director. We had school administrators, faculty, staff, and a parent. But as the mold kept reappearing, we decided that we need to, we actually had to close school down at Thanksgiving time because, again, there were a lot of mounting frustrations with the staff and students. We didn't know what was going on. So we decided to have a deep clean and a professional remediation at that time, which was the Thanksgiving break. So that was, that was a huge inconvenience for our families and to modify the school calendar at the time. We also held informational meetings to discuss ongoing concerns. We did testing results and possible solutions. Eventually, we settled on a comprehensive energy management services procurement to capitalize a full investment-grade audit of both school buildings, which included the infrastructure, the building envelope, the equipment, et cetera. And would that take us, the info would, we would then pursue this project so that we could address a permanent solution to address both buildings and the concerns that we had at the time. So we selected Trane as our turnkey provider for a design-build solution for more efficient and effective design and engineering. There's a statutory obligation for Trane to generate conservation measures of energy, which have greatly benefited the project via energy efficiency and related grants, incentives, and rebates that we will be getting into later on in this presentation. So here are just some images. We have a lot of images, but I just put a few in for tonight that actually shows when the mold was present. And as you can see, it was in the air, traveling to some of the ducts and vents. If you go to the next one, you can see that it was even on cloth surfaces, on furniture, and even in the picture underneath furniture. And it obvious, it wasn't always obvious spots. So we would lift up rugs, and it would be underneath rugs. So again, we had a lot of teachers very concerned at the time. We replaced many rugs, many chairs, many bulletin boards. We took all the necessary precautions to keep everyone safe. And just a couple more photos. You can see those are actually student laptops that had mold on them underneath desks. So when we say that we had to close the building down for a deep clean, we literally emptied all of our classrooms at that time. And we had Surf Pro come in in November, and they came out to do a very deep cleaning during the Thanksgiving break. And again, that was clearing out furniture from every single room at the elementary school and doing the furniture, deep cleaning, everything. So in addition, you can see that our current Band-Aid fixes, which consist of over 60 classroom and office dehumidifiers and office air purifiers, some we had, those purifiers we had in existence from COVID, but as the pictures tell, these units are in the way of our teaching and learning. They're right behind classroom work tables, in the path of a bookshelf, and they all increase our electricity usage and give off noise and heat as they run every single day, day and night, which is impairing the educational environment. In addition, as the units fail, all these individual units, we need to continue to replace them and replace the filters, which obviously becomes very costly. And some of you may recall, about a year ago, we had a neighboring district that had school closed for several days due to a fire that started with one dehumidifier. And again, we had more than 60 running day and night, which is not safe.
So as Superintendent Bailey alluded to, you know, these fixes, these temporary fixes, you know, cost an extremely large amount of money. The deep clean was precaried as an emergency procurement due to the health and safety hazards, and that cost upwards of $188,000. We went through environmental and testing services that cost nearly $51,000. And then with the miscellaneous equipment and replacement of furniture and fixtures that, you know, occurred at the time and continues to be ongoing with the filter changes and the failed dehumidifiers and air purifiers and so on, that's about $35,000 and counting. All in all, the school funded through grants and revolving funds and some operating budget approximately $275,000 to mitigate this problem.
Can I just add something? I just want everyone to keep in mind that's nearly $300,000, but that doesn't even talk about the intangible costs related to employees and student absences and the impact on teaching and learning for those individuals.
In addition to, you know, utility costs and lost labor hours for, you know, catering to this equipment versus doing jobs that actually need to be performed. But so in addition to this $274, again, which we were able to, you know, Band-Aid ourselves without asking for any additional funding, which is important because we're very strategic about it, there's also a breakup fee with Trane if we were not to move forward with this project to the tune of about $21,000, and that's for all the efforts they've put in so far, the audits that they've provided on our buildings, as well as forfeiting potentially a half a million dollar Green Community Grant that we received relative to this project. So in summary, the project consists of indoor environmental quality improvements, a building management system upgrade, building envelope improvements, duct sealing, and air purification, all components that work together and in harmony to ensure an effective and efficient So to improve indoor comfort and community control at AES, we would be upgrading the HVAC systems and controls. Picture here are some of our units in our penthouses and on top of our roof. These units, which are approaching, you know, the end of their useful life anyways, would be retrofitted inside out so that we can maintain the integrity of the structure, but also upgrade, you know, the necessary components to get a new life out of these machines that are inevitably near failure. It will improve indoor air quality through advanced dehumidification strategies, and we will add equipment as well for variable refrigerant flow, heat pump technology for efficient heating and cooling, a part of the clean energy component of this project and decarbonization, which we received the grant for. In addition, in order to add these components and again, make sure that they'll work in harmony, we would be upgrading electrical and structural infrastructure to support the needs, which is also a benefit and in large undertaking to the project. What's important about this initiative is that we do not want to, excuse me, we do not want to wait for the equipment to fail again and approach another $275,000 plus fix. We want to fix it now, and we want to make sure it works and it's working properly and it dehumidifies and addresses our concerns. As evidenced by daily feedback in our school ticketing system for our maintenance and custodial tasks, almost every day we get tickets regarding temperature issues. And my classroom's too hot, my classroom's too cold, my classroom feels, you know, humid, my classroom feels dry. And it's all because this equipment, along with the building management system, which I'm going to get to on the next slide, isn't working properly. So improving the air quality will improve the environment in the classrooms for a health and safety perspective, but also to provide comfort and provide a conducive learning So the next measure that this project will upgrade is our building management system. Again, pictured on the right is our current system, which is dated and ineffective. You know, we can make certain tweaks to this system, and the system will show that it's responding, but when we get to the louvers and events that should have changed, there is no change, and we have to manually, you know, correct those controls ourselves. A new system will achieve full integration and centralized visibility for all buildings through a single web-based system, enhancing operations, management, and control. We'll be able to access it from a phone, a tablet, a laptop. And it will be essential for maximizing incentives and payments from EverSource because it will allow us to operate an efficient building that will save us on utility costs and just provide, you know, insurance that we know what's going on. With a new system, it will alert us if the temperature changes outside of a certain range, if the humidity changes outside of a certain range. You know, if there's a drop in temperature because something failed, we don't have to worry about not knowing and coming into work on Monday to a surprise and emergency. The system will tell us over the weekend. We can avoid, you know, a frozen pipe that would burst and lead to more problems, which would be, you know, extremely expensive as well. So, you know, relative to the everyday citizen, think of it as a new car, right? You get a new car with new technology, and that car tells you now when you need an oil change, when your tire pressure is low, when something isn't working properly. So you can get ahead of it rather than react to it and have to pay the big bill of, you know, major repairs. This project will also address building envelope improvements. There was a separate audit involved in this process that audited just the building envelope that looked at, you know, eaves, doorways, windows, everything related to the infrastructure of the building, where there could be air leaks, moisture leaks, so on and so forth. But by addressing that, we create an environment that is closed, contained, and that we can control. We don't want to fight against outside elements with an upgraded system and not addressing the envelope where, you know, moisture's still sneaking in, and we're just battling against it and against it and against it. So this would provide the proper insulation, structural elements to maintain the integrity of the building and ultimately preserve the building to get more life out of the building. It will also help prevent the entry of pollutants, allergens, and outside contaminants. Again, with all these leaky areas, those could come in through, you know, any of these eaves and just infiltrate their way into the classroom or the systems. And then in addition, it just, again, with the energy component, it increases energy efficiency by reducing heating and cooling requirements. So once again, we have a controlled environment. There's no outside forces pushing and pulling on what we're trying to control. You know, so again, similar to your home, you're not, you might have a drafty window, but you're not going to let that go by and, you know, have zero degree temperatures kind of leaking through those windows when you're trying to stay warm all winter and paying for oil and so on and so forth. In addition, you know, if you have moisture leaks or roof leaks, you're not just going to let that leak and keep dripping and, you know, erode your house. You're going to address it and fix it. So these are measures that we need to take now to preserve our buildings. And then quickly here in this presentation, which will be shared, are just more pictures of where they found infiltration, you know, up in the ceilings, at the roof wall intersections, and all these pictures have captions of exactly what's going on. Another measure is duct sealing. So similarly to the building envelope, you know, our air is going to be traveling through ductwork. We want to make sure we're controlling where that air is going and it's not leaking outside of the ductwork, or better yet, contain it's getting into that ductwork from outside areas. It will eliminate condensation in unconditioned spaces caused by leaked cold air. It will minimize energy loss from hot and cold air leakage into unconditioned areas. And again, it will make sure that the air we're trying to deliver is going where it's supposed to be delivered and not, you know, outside into the plenums of the buildings and the classrooms. Also, it ensures that the air distribution systems are functioning properly, minimizing circulation of dust, dirt, mold, and improving the air quality all around. And then finally, the last measure would be air purification. Central air purification solution with powered active filters. This would be new. It would be a system of devices that actively clean or treat the air as it passes through the HVA system, using electrical charges to neutralize contaminants. So unlike a residential system, it can control the air and force it to pass through these filters rather than relying on the air to naturally make its way through a filter by chance. And then in addition, these filters would help capture bacteria, viruses, and gases. Your normal filter would not do that. So upgrading the building's air purification system can reduce the presence of harmful airborne pollutants, allergens, pathogens, and make the environment safer for students As far as project cost and funding goes, this project has been marketed as a not-to-achieve $4.2 million cost. We're sticking with that, but we're able to offset that cost. You know, the funding sources will be a debt exclusion if successful. We have received a $500,000 Green Community Grant, and to date, we have estimated minimum EverSource rebates and incentives totaling $200,000. So where that gets us at this point in time is a $4.2 million project offset by half a million dollar Green Communities grant related to the energy measures of this project, and then another $200,000 in rebates and incentives related to energy measures of this project. So we're knocking almost a quarter of the pie off of the cost of the project and then relying on a debt exclusion for the remaining cost. And again, the scope would get us all five of these measures and ultimately upgrade and enhance and preserve our elementary school building and create a proper learning environment. One comment on the estimated EverSource rebates and incentives, we do want to work towards a final number. What EverSource is doing right now is they're taking Trane's plans and sequences and auditing them. They're challenging them, they're asking them to make changes that are more energy-efficient or just better, in their opinion, better controlled. And Trane is reacting appropriately to maximize the incentives for this project. Those incentives could be upwards to $550,000. So there's a little more there that we can offset the costs and hope come to fruition between now and the time that we need to borrow. In addition, they had a previous public meeting. The select board and the town administrator spoke on how they could potentially look into town reserve funds to help offset the tax impact to our residents as well, and we look to receive more information from them on that matter. So in summary, the taxpayer impacted the debt exclusion. Right currently, our residential tax rate is $10.79 per $1,000 of assessed home value. Commercial tax rate is $15.22 per $1,000 of assessed value. The average single-family assessed value in Cushing at, as we speak, is $471,000 and change. The average single-family tax bill per year is about $5,090. So again, based on our current measures and where we would be borrowing, we would look to be borrowing $3.5 million. That would be principal, excuse me, principal and interest, principal, $3.5 million and interest of $1.47 million over 20 years. The highest year of principal and interest would be about $311,000 payment. The lowest would be a $178,000 payment, and your average payment over 20 years is about $248,000. On the next slides, I'm going to show you the impact that those three scenarios have on a taxpayer in Cushing. Again, with the small font, right? So this scenario would be your highest impact. So the year that if we borrow $3.5 million, we would be looking at a $311,500 payment. What this tells you is essentially the tax rate impact per $1,000 would increase 15 cents per assessed value. Or what that amounts to is approximately $70.76 to the average single-family tax bill in Cushing. So the tax bill for someone with a $471,000 assessed value home that usually has a tax bill of $5,090 will increase by $70.76 for that year. In the lowest scenario, where, you know, we paid down a lot of the principal and there's not much interest accruing on that principal, and we're looking at a $178,500 payment, the increase on the tax rate impact is eight cents per $1,000 of assessed value or $37.74 to the average single-family tax bill in Cushing. So again, $471,000 home is our average, a $5,090 tax bill with a $37.74 increase for that year. What that amounts to on average is a 12 cent increase per $1,000 assessed value or about $56.61 for the average single-family tax bill in Cushing. For what is a $3.5 million project to, again, preserve our schools and to create a healthy environment?
So there's many benefits to the community. Fiscally, we need facility updates, right? That's no secret. But where savings will help pay for the project over time, I think that's important, as well as lower maintenance costs. Energy savings guaranteed by Trane, EverSource utility rebates to reduce capital costs, the Green Communities grant opportunities to reduce the capital cost, the potential for increase in property values improved because we'll have improved educational outcomes. And more importantly, and I think I can't stress this enough, is that this project really helps avoid the need for building a brand-new school, and that could be well over $100 million. So $100 million. So benefits socially, optimizing indoor air quality in our schools to solve the humidity issues at AES. It will positively impact student comfort and the educator's retention, reduce sick days and mental and physical health, consistent and positive learning environment for all of the townspeople's kids. And it's really, we're talking about the future of Cushing. Also, as you know, many community groups use our facilities for sports and clubs, meetings, voting, et cetera, and now we want to have an improved environment for all to benefit from. And then environmental, measurable reduction in utility consumption, measurable reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. It could serve for a community model for sustainability. The incorporated energy efficiency and sustainable practices could serve as a model for other buildings in the town or even neighboring communities and encourage them to adopt similar strategies for their buildings, leading to a broader environmental impact.
So just to reiterate the timeline, you know, back in February of 2024, we issued an RFQ to pursue an energy management services company to perform an investment-grade audit. So in February '24, we issued that RFQ. In May, after going through the extensive review, interviews, reference checks with these ESCOs, these energy service, energy management service companies, we slept in Trane. By July, we executed an investment-grade audit, and from July to December, they developed scope of improvements and provided a final investment-grade audit. From September to present, we've engaged stakeholders at all levels, whether that's, you know, our students' families, faculty, you know, town offices, or just publicly, a public meeting for the residents. And we're going to continue to do that up until the ballot and town meeting, which takes us to the next part of the timeline.
Okay. So next, we're going to be having a joint select board and school committee public hearing, and that's on Wednesday, April 16. Our annual town election will be the April 22nd, and then the annual town meeting will be June 2nd. And I'd like to just say we encourage all the citizens to stay involved in this process, to attend these meetings. And if anybody has any questions, please reach out to the boards, the committees, the admin team. We're all here to answer questions. And I would just ask if Patrick could just go over that debt exclusion ballot question so that the residents will understand what's being asked of them.
So we figured it would be important to share what the language might look like on the ballot question as we approach the ballot date, as this, you know, doesn't happen every year. So on this slide is what was shared with me that is going to be on the ballot, which I will read. Shall the town of Cushing be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2? 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay costs of energy efficiency improvements, including but not limited to air, environment quality, and decarbonization improvements to be made pursuant to an energy services contract, including the payment of costs incidental related thereto?
Right, there's no mention of the school. There's no mention of the school in that. Is that set how it's going to be?
So that is set how it's going to be.
I don't understand that.
I think what's important is by law, what we are and aren't allowed to put into this question. We can get clarification on the school, but ultimately, it's the select board, you know, entering into debt agreement at some point. But we also aren't allowed to put the quantity, the dollar amount into this debt question. So steps to take would be, one, vote on this ballot question. You know, we're not going to tell you which way to vote, but you have to vote, or, you know, when you do vote, this will be brought to your attention.
Is it a yes or no?
It will be a yes or a no question. And if the vote is successful and the ballot question moves forward, the article in town meeting will speak to the project cost not to exceed 4.2 million in borrowings, and it will speak to the explanation that this is for the school project related to the measures that we've discussed. So that will come into play on the town article, and that will also have to be successfully voted on to continue with this project.
Patrick, typically, there's something besides the ballot question that provides a little bit of context in terms of what the ask is for. Will that be part of?
Not on a ballot question. Again, on the town article, that will be below explaining what the article speaks to. But as the ballot question goes, that language is what you see is what you get. And what you're doing is just entertaining the idea to allow it to be on the town article for then it to be voted on again to bond or enter to contract.
So I don't know if that's entirely true, because we do get those red books for, I don't know if anybody's seen those before, and those are for ballot questions. And it says, if you vote yes, it says, this is what will happen. If you vote no, this is what will happen. So are you saying from the town level, we're not able to do that, but from the state level, you are?
I received motions, and I know this is where, this was decided through town board council and through town general council by law, how it was advised.
Right, it can be written like that, but explanations, like there's a man or something?
I did not see that on the document that I received. It's a question we can ask.
And also, are we allowed during the ballot, during the town election, can people hold signs across the street regarding this?
Yeah. I'm not going to take these questions. I do recommend that we talk to town and school council as it pertains to these types of questions.
I'm hopefully seeing, because I want to make sure that enough information is shared with the public so they understand what they're voting for or against.
Correct.
So I just want to make it known that we do have some guests tonight. First, I want to thank you all, the school committee, and our business manager, Patrick McIntyre, has done an incredible amount of work to get where we are with this. I want to thank him for everything. The school district has also hired Beth Greenblatt, who is our consultant from Beacon Integrated Solutions, and she's been a tremendous help to us in our district. She's an expert in this area. And then we have some folks with us, and Beth is with us as well virtually. We have Morgan Perez with us from Trane, and also we have Mr. Maxma, who is with us in person tonight. So they're also here in case you all have questions, specific questions regarding this project.
I have one question. I always think it's in the beginning, you know, what, how much has been spent mitigating the situation? If we failed to do something, say five years, how much we would have spent in five years in mitigating the issue of the moisture and the?
I'm going to let Patrick take that, but before he does, I just want to say, as you know, it was $275,000. And I need to make it known, this was Esser funds. We no longer have Esser funds, so if we run into another problem with mold, et cetera, we don't have the money in our operating budget to handle and mitigate the problem like we did with the Esser funding. So I don't know if we even know the cost in the future, what could potentially be.
Right, I think that's the risk that's posed, is we don't know. We know what the cost of a replacement dehumidifier is, we know what the cost of filters are, we know what we're paying our team for labor hours and overtime to maintain those. Superintendent Bailey talked about how we can't put a cost on health, we can't put a cost on absentee, whether student or teacher. And then, you know, if these larger components and larger equipment that we know is failing have an audit to show that they're approaching their useful life begin to fail, it's going to be like any other, you know, capital need. It's going to be extremely high, it's going to be reactive, it's going to be an emergency, we're going to need it yesterday, and it's going to cost, you know, twice as much to get it in than the time that we need versus a planning approach, which would be this project.
And I just want to say, well- Top the project in five years, and it's still a square one. That's what that would be like.
And while we weren't deemed a sick building, it was not considered lack mold, everybody has different sensitivity to mold. So we did have staff impacted by this and students. Nobody wants to miss out on being here with the kids or the kids being here for their education. So during that time, I spoke to many, many parents and families as well as staff, and we've been on it, like I said, for two years now dealing with this. And what we have going on right now is abandoning.
So if we don't have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? I mean, we have our consultant here, we have Morgan Perez here, we do have someone who wants to come on.
Anybody else in the public that wants to say hello to the?
So we'd like to open the floor for public comments. We welcome your thoughts, questions, feedback on this important initiative that will shape the future of our schools and community. For those folks who have signed up for public comment, we will allow for three minutes for comments and feedback. And so if you could step to the podium, kindly state your name and address for the record before you provide your comments, and we thank you for your participation.
Excuse my voice, I've been sick, but it's David Flynn, 36th one B row. By the way, since I've been a school finance operations director for more than 28 years myself, so I am in support of schools and keeping them healthy and safe. There's a couple of questions, though. So this is being procured under Chapter 25A, which I propose to do out there. So typically, under these ESCO energy management savings contracts, we used in the past, I know, it was more expensive now, it was funded by the guaranteed savings that you would realize in any community. So what are the predicted savings that would occur from spending this 4.2 million dollars?
I can take that, but Morgan and Max, feel free to jump in. So there will be minor energy, or cost savings from the energy improvements. I think estimations are in the $3,000 range annually.
Is that three?
Three, singular three. Singular three. And it's because of the need for the improved equipment that we need and the equipment that we need to add to dehumidify.
Thank you, that's a quick call, and say to dehumidify. Again, in a brand new school building that we built where I worked a couple of years ago, the building was dehumidified, it wasn't cooled. I'm just curious, was that an option that was looked at to condition and keep it at a relative humidity level that is very comfortable without the added expense of constantly cooling as well?
So of course, we can't speak to other buildings and how they're engineered, but we have explored other options. You know, this was a good, better, best approach. This was the best approach for Kushnet Public Schools. We've looked into other ways to dehumidify the air, and I'm going to actually turn it over to Morgan and Max if they want to speak in detail on that.
Absolutely, thank you for the comment. My name is Maxma, I'm a project developer with Trane. I have the privilege of working on a lot of the engineering aspects with the school administration. So I'll speak to, I'll share with folks some of the work, the background work that we did in terms of engineering to come up with this suite of solutions. We considered several methods of addressing the problem, as you mentioned, right? There are many ways to dehumidify. For example, technology exists that does desiccant dehumidification without having necessarily to cool the space. But based on the infrastructure at the Kushnet, at the schools at the Kushnet, the constraints are such that, for example, there is no availability of natural gas, the central units are on the roof, right, which makes accessibility, structurally, other aspects a constraint. So really cooling the air down, dehumidification through refrigeration cycle is the most cost-effective solution at this facility. So that's the, that's the, that's a heat pump solution that we ultimately move forward with. Now, to your point of energy consumption, we understand that to address a humidification problem, to improve the dehumidification of the school control of the humidification, it is necessary to use some form of energy, right? Our goal is to use that energy in the most responsible, in the least operational cost way possible. So we've selected high efficiency equipment in addressing this issue. Those are the variable refrigerate flow technology, we have ERF units, we have heat pump replacement for the existing rooftop units. So the energy piece has absolutely been analyzed and been reviewed, and that's why we work collaboratively, not only with the consultant, Ms. Greenblatt, but also with EverSource. But we want to make sure that everybody agrees that we are taking, not only that we are seeking their agreement, but also their input to make sure that we've considered the most responsible way to move forward with the humidification control.
And the other point to the energy conservation measures that I just wanted to add, though we are adding to, you know, maybe the utility load more than, you know, what's favorable in one of these types of projects, we're nearly eliminating the use of our fossil fuels. So the decarbonization aspect, there will be savings on heating oil, you know, that we will be not using as much anymore because of these ERF heat pumps. So that's an important measure, too.
Can I ask one question, please? And that's the other thing about, it's really just like addressing the root cause of the moisture infiltration, trying to stand from one of your engineers there, you know, the brick facade is a major source of moisture and water infiltration into the buildings, not just around like the windows and doors. What's being done to address the cause of the moisture in the first place, I were trying to eradicate with the system.
As Mr. McIntyre showed in some of the slides, right, part of the solution, part of the suite of solutions is to improve the envelope. So that comes with improved infiltration control, improved control of heat losses and moisture migration. So that's going to be part of the solution. Now, again, we recommend that the solution be looked at holistically rather than at a piece at a time, right? For example, you don't want to address a part of the building at a time, you don't want to address a single system at a time. When we have the opportunity to look at this as a holistic solution, we want to make sure that we address how the moisture comes in, how the moisture is controlled, and how can we eliminate the moisture as necessary through a central system, and that's what we propose.
Because if you've got a hole in your boat, you don't want to dig a bilge up, you want to fix the hole in the boat.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we also want to, we understand that buildings will never be 100% tight. For one, even a well-engineered tight building requires ventilation, right? And our solution is not to start the ventilation, we will have CO2 sensors in spaces to make sure that ventilation rates are sufficient, right? As the ventilation brings in air, and if the air has a high moisture content, then there is a need for dehumidify the air, right? Or we are not saying moisture is unnatural, that any moisture in the building is not to be expected, but it has to be in a way that we control the moisture, how it gets into the building. If it gets in through the ventilation air, that's not a problem because our coils are there. Our central systems are meant to capture that moisture and remove it or control it. But we don't want moisture to come in through uncontrolled methods, and that's where conversation happens, and that's where potential mold issues happen.
I just want to, I want to add to that, too, as well. I don't think that there's anyone that has made, or, I don't know how to word this, I guess, found evidence that the brick facade is allowing in moisture or air. I think what you're referring to is where we had a roof-wall intersection where the flashing was improperly constructed, which isn't related to, you know, these energy measures, but is a construction need that we need to address. So yes, it's a separate project, and I think what's important, right, is we're working towards preserving these school buildings. Just because this project succeeds or fails doesn't mean it's going to be the last repair that we put into these buildings. That would be silly to say. You know, we will still, with the building envelope improvement, you know, we will still experience roof leaks, we will still experience infiltration at weaknesses, but we will be able to combat them better, and we're getting, you know, most of the work out of the way by controlling the environment so that when those issues happen, because they happen everywhere in new construction and old, it's not going to impact every single classroom the same way that it has in the past. Thank you very much.
There are other questions?
I just want to give Ms. Greenblatt and Morgan an opportunity to comment on any of those questions if they, you know, felt necessary or just, you know, make any statements before we wrap this up.
I can go ahead if you can hear me.
You can hear me.
Awesome, thank you. Just a really great set of questions coming through from the community, right? And it shows that the community really cares that this solution has been thought of and worked through, and that we didn't just throw, you know, one specific solution at a wall and call that what we would move forward, right? And I just wanted to emphasize that we did, right? We did go through a very comprehensive, very long process of developing multiple solutions that we thought might address this problem comprehensively, right? It involved multiple months of site visits, walking subcontractors, performing energy calculations, looking at the impact of different systems on the humidity and on the temperature. And really, ultimately, wasn't just related to what would reduce the humidity the most, it was what will address the problem, reduce the humidity, provide more comfort, provide greater controls, reduce energy, or increase energy efficiency by reducing utility bills, and allow the least high first cost option, right? So allowing the most incentives possible to offset what the first cost of this project might be. So really, it was holistic, our team evaluated multiple options. Max, as you can see, is really in-depth with every single part of this solution. And just, we're happy to be here and to be presenting a project to you that we believe will really address the community's needs and provide buildings that are safe, comfortable, and efficient. We like to say safe and soundly, so hopefully, that addresses most questions, but happy to answer any more if they come up, and I'll pass it off to Beth.
Thank you, Morgan. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate and to thank Patrick and the superintendent for their hard work in putting this together. Municipalities, public sectors, public schools have an opportunity through a procurement opportunity available under Massachusetts general laws that allows for the public sector to look at its infrastructure and facilities in a comprehensive way, identify issues, and address them specifically and comprehensively to gain energy-efficient solutions that's supported through, as one community member just said, supported through a combination of debt service and energy savings. In short, reinvesting those energy savings back into the specific buildings. And it's a, the benefit of this type of approach to solve these specific problems is that the community can best tailor the solution to address the specific needs, realize more efficient and better operating facilities, and allow your school department to do their jobs more efficiently and more effectively, while simultaneously improving the infrastructure of your building and securing its longevity. And it's a good intersection of all of those issues. And the Kushnet did not be the first public entity to address these types of projects in this way. Performance contracting, as this is referred to, is an approach that's been undertaken by interesting municipalities. In fact, I would suggest, just by the nature of the municipalities that I've supported in this regard, at least 50% of the Commonwealth only assesses whether it's government, school- in this regard, at least 50% of the Commonwealth, 20% whether it's the department, school districts, regional school districts, or municipalities in its entirety, have undertaken some form of energy management performance contracting, because it's bound to be a very good way to address these very specific issues in upgrading and renewing infrastructure while simultaneously doing it in the most economical and energy-efficient way. And so I see this as an opportunity, certainly, and I'm delighted that EverSource and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts also recognize that this is truly a tremendous opportunity, and they're recognizing it not only with their attaboys, but they're recognizing it also with their wallets. The half a million dollar Green Communities grant that you all have been able to secure, quite frankly, is specifically tied to this project. Really, another project, as an example, a dehumidification-only project would be disqualified under that grant application. And so truly, it was an opportunity to sort of jump into the flow of the stream of available resources. EverSource is working very hard with Patrick and with Trane to maximize the incentives it can offer to squeak out even more energy savings and improve overall solution so that it can help offset the first cost of the project. And so I think that's really the opportunity that the community has in front of itself. There's a need, it's been documented and demonstrated, it is clearly creating potentially some integrity issues for the building and for the stakeholders in the building, and the solutions that have been identified not only will, are more efficient, more effective, are new, and new only, they're new to your building. They're technologies that have been utilized across the country and now even more so integrated into the sort of the New England market. But they are tried-and-true technologies, there's nothing that's, you know, groundbreaking here. But how would they're being used in this situation will improve the efficiency of the buildings, it will enhance the indoor air and the indoor environmental quality, and as a result, will allow you to retain a much longer life for your building and for your stakeholders to utilize the buildings. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. So Dr. Bailey, if I could just say a couple of things in closing before we go to our end. So thank you, Dr. Bailey, Mr. McIntyre, Trane representatives, Beth, for your feedback participation thus far. As we've discussed today, this project is critical for improving the indoor environment, extending the leg for our existing school buildings, and creating a healthier, more energy-efficient learning space for our students and staff. The upgrades we're proposing will help us address pressing issues related to air quality, building infrastructure, and energy use, all while avoiding the need for costly construction. As elected school committee officials, we are committed to doing our proper due diligence to ensure that any decisions made are in the best interest of our students, staff, and community. We believe in this project, and we believe it's the best option that will address the problems that the schools have faced in recent years. So again, I thank all of the folks, community members who are here, who asked questions, who participated. And so given that, I think I will adjourn, and I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting.
Some more seconds?
All those in favor.
Uh, fine.
Any dissent? Seeing none, the motion passes, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.